Good evening. This seventy-ninth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Bishop Angel Nunez of the Bilingual Christian Church. Following the invocation, we would have the pleasure of allegiance.
Would you please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, we come before you today, recognizing that our city is facing great challenges. We are at a moment of crisis and decisions have to be made for the betterment of our citizens and for this great city. And therefore, Lord, tonight I ask you that you would give the leadership of this city wisdom, guidance, that your favor and your grace would be upon each and every single one of them as they attend to the affairs of the city of Baltimore. I bless them and I ask you, Father God, that you would be present here in everything that will be done tonight. This I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Bonnie Besser with Rebuilding Together Baltimore.
Thank you, Council President Scott and the members of the City Council for the opportunity to speak to you about the Housing Upgrades to Benefits Seniors Program. My name is Bonnie Besser. I am the Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Baltimore and I am a founding member of the HUBS Leadership Team. HUBS started in two thousand and fifteen through generous funding from the Stolman and Hoffberger Foundations. In two thousand and eighteen, the Weinberg Foundation also made a generous capital contribution to the HUBS program and we have recently received funding from the Abel and Goldsacker Foundations to support our work. Over fifteen public and private agencies are involved as partners in the HUBS program. Baltimore City DHCD is an active partner and Deputy Commissioner Alice Kennedy is actively engaged in our leadership team and in our strategy. HUBS has invested over twelve million dollars in Baltimore communities since two thousand and fifteen and we have served over eighteen hundred households and the need is still great. We've barely scratched the surface. The HUBS program was conceived by a group of funders and organizations that serve older adults in Baltimore, both housing organizations and groups that provide other supportive services to older adults. We all recognize that it was very difficult for older adults to navigate the process of applying for home repair services in Baltimore. There were a number of programs, but each had different qualifications, application processes, and waiting periods. HUBS, through the work of our community-based case managers, has helped streamline the application process for Baltimoreans over age sixty-five who need home repairs and modifications to help them age in place. Seniors are accessing services more quickly than before now and are receiving wraparound services that complement their home repairs and home modifications. Additionally, our work helps to stabilize occupied housing and preserve affordable homeownership in some of our most vulnerable communities. It also helps to preserve wealth in families as they pass homes down to the next generation. HUBS has been nationally recognized for our outstanding public philanthropic partnership through an award from the HUD Secretary and the Council on Foundations. Additionally, several organizations and jurisdictions from across the country have reached out to us for guidance on replicating the program. I want to share a quick story about a Bel Air Edison family that we served through HUBS. Charles is a seventy-five-year-old Vietnam vet. He and his wife are caring for his mother-in-law, who is in her nineties, and Charles and his wife found themselves also needing to take in their three granddaughters, all under age ten. But the roof of their house leaked and there were major plumbing issues, including a non-functioning kitchen sink, and there were numerous safety hazards throughout the home. Social services gave them a deadline for fixing everything, otherwise they could not keep the grandchildren. Their household income is under seventeen thousand dollars a year. They didn't know where to start, so they reached out to HUBS. With the assistance of a HUBS caseworker and funding from the Weinberg Foundation, we made the home safer and healthier for all of the occupants, ranging from age four to age ninety. The roof and plumbing issues were repaired within three weeks of their initial application and further repairs were made several months later. There are many, many other households just like Charles' family in Baltimore. We currently have seven hundred households waiting for HUBS services and we receive an average of three hundred calls per week from people seeking assistance. We now have a great system in place for helping seniors to navigate the home repair application process, but the need in Baltimore still far outweighs the money we have available to address the need. If we are able to secure a greater investment from Baltimore City, we can further leverage philanthropic dollars and help even more people. We've provided some written materials for you this evening that tell you about our program and how it works, our investments to date, and a list of our partners. Thank you again, President Scott and City Council, for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. We actually have two youth showcase showcases tonight. The first youth showcase is from Malik Johns at City Neighbors High School. Malik?
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Malik Johns. I am a junior at City Neighbors High School. I have a three-point-oh GPA. Currently, I'm entering the City Councilman's President Office where I have learned a lot about what the duties and responsibilities are. The most interesting thing I learned during my time here is how to conduct a meeting effectively and effectively by using the Robert's Rules of Order. I would like to thank the Councilman President for allowing me the opportunity to enter his office. His experience has been rewarding and I hope to help my fellow students at City Neighbors understand the legislative process of Baltimore City Government.
Thank you. Thank you, Malik. And now we will have Shawanda Jackson, a student alum of the THREAT program.
Good afternoon and thank you to the City Council for having me here today. My name is Shawanda Jackson and THREAT Baltimore is a Baltimore-based organization that was founded in two thousand and four. The first cohort of students came from Dunbar High School. THREAT began with the belief that the power of relationships has the ability to change people individually and collectively. We still hold that belief today. The students enrolled in THREAT begin their THREAT journey in their ninth grade year. These students are incredible, phenomenal young people that face the greatest opportunity and achievement gaps. The youth enrolled in THREAT are in the lowest twenty-five percentile of their freshman class with a GPA lower than one in some cases. Historically in Baltimore, youth with that low of a GPA have a six percent chance of graduating. However, THREAT never gives up. We stand with and behind our young people for ten years. THREAT provides support to the youth in a way that a family would provide support to one another. The outcome of this dedication is that eighty-five percent of our students graduate high school within six years and eighty-three percent receive a two-to-four-year college degree or complete a certificate program. How would I know? I know because I can speak to the truth about these numbers. Again, my name is Shawanda Jackson and I'm a proud THREAT alum. I now work on the THREAT staff team as an HR professional. Throughout my years in THREAT, I've had many trials, many tribulations, in which THREAT has helped me to overcome these obstacles, from the one of my first volunteers becoming the godmother of my children to another volunteer that I worked with, we got matching tattoos before she left off to college. So I can truly speak that we are what we say we are. I believe that THREAT is a really transformational program and that with the help of the members of Baltimore City, we have the ability to do so much more. If you believe that you have the power to change the trajectory of a young person's life, I believe that the time is now and the place is THREAT. THREAT is enrolling over two hundred students in this coming month over across six partner schools in Baltimore. So if you would like to learn more or join us on this journey, then you can check us out at thread.org or you can follow us on our social media platforms. Thank you again.
Roll call. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now proceed with adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Will file objection, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two and three of your agenda executive nominations.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-six-seven, Arnold H. Sampson, Member Board of Ethics, District Five.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill twenty-dash-zero-five-zero-five, Building, Fire, and Related Codes, two thousand and twenty edition, for the purpose of adopting and revising Building, Fire, and Related Codes Article comprising the Maryland Building Performance Standards, the International Building Code, the National Electric Electrical Code, the International Fuel-Gas Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, the International Fire Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, the International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, the International Green Conservation Code, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, all as supplemented, amended, or otherwise modified by this ordinance, providing for the effect, construction, and effective date of these new standards and codes, conforming, correcting, and clarifying certain language, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the adoption of new Building, Fire, Property Maintenance, Electrical, Plumbing, Mechanical, and Related Codes for Baltimore City. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-dash-zero-five-zero-six, Baltimore City Critical Area Management Program, Critical Area Manual Map and Zoning, for the purpose of repealing the Baltimore City Critical Area Management Program and document and approving and adopting a new Baltimore City Critical Area Management Program Manual, repealing the Baltimore City Critical Area Program Map and approving and adopting a new Baltimore City Critical Area Program Map, prohibiting certain additional uses and activities in certain areas of the critical area, defining and redefining certain terms, conforming, correcting, and clarifying zoning code provisions, governing the critical area overlay zoning district, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the two thousand and twenty Baltimore City Critical Area Management Program Map and Zoning. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-dash-zero-five-zero-seven, Rezoning, Seventeen-Twenty Frederick Avenue, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Seventeen-Twenty Frederick Avenue as outlined and read in the accompanying plat, from the C-one zoning district to the C-two zoning district. Sponsor, Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-dash-zero-five-zero-eight, Rezoning, Fifty-four-O-One Pulaski Highway, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Fifty-four-O-One Pulaski Highway as outlined and read in the accompanying plat, from the I-one zoning district to the C-four zoning district. Sponsor, McCray.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-dash-zero-five-zero-nine, Energy Tax Proceeds, for the purpose of requiring that certain proceeds from the city's energy tax are dedicated to the Fair Election Fund established by Section fifteen of the city charter and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Burnett, President Scott, Bullock, Henry, Cohen, Dorsey, Clark.
Please add Councilman Sneed as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
President and to all my colleagues, so in two thousand and eighteen, we had over seventy-five percent of the voters of Baltimore approve the Fair Election Fund and make that a reality for the citizens of Baltimore. When we talk about the influence that big money has on politics, being a leader on the issue of electoral reform and campaign finance reform has been a staple of this body. So it was passed by the council, it was approved by the voters, this body then unanimously supported the operational bill for the Fair Election Fund in January and was signed by the mayor. And this is the final step to bringing fair elections to Baltimore City is funding the fund. And so I look forward to a great hearing, a lot of feedback on it, but you know Reverend Little from NAACP said today, you know, we cannot afford to not fund this program. It puts small donors at the center of elections in Baltimore. We've seen what's happening locally, we're seeing what's happening nationally in politics, and if we're going to restore trust in local government and national government, we have to take the influence of big donors out of the equation and make sure that, you know, people with great ideas are the folks who are winning elections in Baltimore, not folks who have access to the most capital. So again, thank you all for the support and look forward to continuing to work through the bringing the Fair Election Fund to fruition in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution twenty-dash-zero-two-zero-one-R, opposing the changes to the Public Charge Rule, for the purpose of standing in solidarity with Baltimore's immigrant communities in opposition to the changes made by the Trump administration to the Public Charge Rule. Sponsor- Sponsors, President Scott, Bullock, Henry, Burnett, Cohen, Pinkett, Dorsey, McCray, Clark, Middleton.
Please add Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Costello as co-sponsors. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you to all my co-sponsors. Two weeks ago today, the Trump administration's new public charge rule went into effect. Related to immigration, this rule change increases the threshold for green card applicants to prove that they are financially stable. It penalizes immigrants and their families for using government benefits that they are entitled to. Essentially, this criminalizes poverty by trying to ban individuals from low-income families from migrating to this country. Trying to limit immigration to those with wealth is just unjust and more, and goes against the very fabric of America. I will continue to stand with Baltimore's immigrant community and remind them that this too is their home, and I will fight for them and fight against anyone, even if that person occupies the White House, to remind them that they too are Baltimoreans and deserves all the support and full weight of their government that they need to live a prosperous life. I would like to also add Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer. Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Reisinger absent. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilman Sneed. Councilwoman Sneed, pardon me. Councilwoman Clark.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution 20-0202R, Baltimore's Fair Development Plan for Zero Waste 2020 to 2040 and beyond, for the purpose of calling on the mayor, on the mayor, the board of estimates, and all affected city agencies to formally acknowledge and move forward in implementing the Fair Development Plan for Zero Waste. Sponsors, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton, Bullock, Henry, Burnett, Cohen, Pinkett, Dorsey, McCray.
Please add Councilman, Council President Scott as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the city council. This is a very important resolution here in this city council. It's historic, really. It is the first time, and it comes from advocates who paid their private sector money to hire a nationally highly-regarded contractor to help write the plan for how we create zero waste, zero waste, in Baltimore, beginning immediately until 2040. Now, it's very specific. It makes specific recommendations. So thank you for sponsoring it, because you've obliged yourself when we go to a vote at a hearing later, to stand behind a lot of very specific and major changes in the way our world is connected. And if I may just take a moment and just read you what this plan and resolution calls upon us to do. Enforce Baltimore's Clean Air Act and its strict emission standards beyond state and federal levels, like ratchet down. Second, terminate the city's contract with Bresco when that contract expires in 2021. Implement a zero-waste bridge strategy, a way to get to the beginning and get going, of expanded recycling collections to all Baltimore neighborhoods, including public housing. And for composting, establishes community-based collection centers throughout the city of Baltimore. And eventually, curbside for that as well. I'm almost finished, Mr. President. Provide free recycling and compost carts to all city households, supported by massive education and outreach, so we all learn how to use them well. Enact collection contracts with existing Baltimore-based organic, that's food, collection providers to support bridge strategy goals. In other words, this whole program turns trash into jobs through recycling, reuse, rehab. And so this is talking about the organic part, which is 25%, our food that we don't eat, of our waste that goes to the incinerator and then goes to be buried alive. So, and finally, and that's not all there is in all these pages, but thank goodness, we're going to go to a hearing of the Health Committee, chaired by my colleague, our colleague, and we will be able to get all the particulars, because that's what we're saying. We're supporting, and finally, a $1 vacant lot ownership program to revitalize neglected and abused lots and connect that to an end illegal dumping fund in support of ownership, maintenance, and development of those very lots. When our grandchildren, I've already got some, some of you don't yet. You'll love them. It makes the kids seem worthwhile. It really does. All right. So when your grandchildren ask, "What did you do to help stop the problem that we were having with the earth falling apart?" You can say, "Well, I got involved, and I helped out with Baltimore's fair..." Let me read it. I want to give you the exact right. "Baltimore's fair development plan for zero waste. It's a big deal, and we can do it. And not only that, we gotta do it if we want Mother Earth not to kill us because she's so angry." Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Resolution 20-0203R, Investigative Hearing, Vacant Structure Water Cutoffs, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Department of Real Estate to discuss the enforcement of existing city law requiring that water be cut off to certain vacant structures. What impediments stand in the way of better enforcement, and whether any legislative action is necessary. Sponsors, Clark, President Scott, Bullock, Henry, Burnett, Cohen, Pinkett, Dorsey, Middleton.
Please add Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Costello. Councilman Costello as co-sponsors. Councilman Schleifer as co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very excited to be part of an investigative hearing. It's my first one in 32 years on the council. I feel like a sleuth. But it's really not a secret. We have a law on the books here in Baltimore City that says that when a vacant building notice is given to a vacant house, at that time, the Department of Public Works must turn off the water to the house or to the building. That way, no flooding of the next-door neighbor, no flooding of the street, no waste of water. And also, another problem is, when we go to sell those vacant properties that are officially vacant, it's awfully expensive if you have to pay all those water liens, and that's what happens sometime. So basically, this isn't happening. This turnoff is not happening, certainly not in a regular basis. And the investigation and sleuthing is to get the agencies to come and explain what's wrong. Do we, did the law come off the books and no one told us? Or is it a lack of personnel? Is it a lack of communication? What's wrong? Because what happens is, I go to buy a house. I'm going to fix it up and sell it for affordable homeownership. And they say, "Well, along with everything else, there's a $25,000 water bill that's a lien on the property. You'll have to pay that too." I can't pay $25,000. The house isn't worth more than $100. And so everything like that cuts down on my ability to try to fix that house and sell it for affordable housing to someone. And that's ridiculous. So that's the bill, that's the investigation I'm asking for. Thank you all for signing on, and I hope we can, I know we have great leaders of both agencies. So I know when we get them in the same room, we can work out what's going wrong here and how to fix it. Thanks.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 20-0204R, Everyone Counts, for the purpose of recognizing the importance of reaching all residents of Baltimore City in the 2020 census, particularly hard-to-count residents. Sponsor, Cohen, President Scott, Bullock, Henry, Burnett, Pinkett, Dorsey, Clark, McCray, Middleton.
Please add Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Schleifer as co-sponsors. Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the census is coming up, and the census is absolutely critical that we make sure that everyone in Baltimore counts. This means we will, if we are unable to get our count up, we will not get the federal funds that we need and deserve, and we will not have the representation that we need and deserve. And I will say that we know there is an effort underway to suppress the census. I know that to your previous resolution, Mr. President, in my district, when I got into council, we had two men get picked up by ICE outside of Walgreens, and a week later, we had a father drop off his nine-year-old child and get taken right outside his son's school. This sends a terrifying message into our immigrant community. They are one of our hard-to-count populations. There is an intentional effort to make cities like Baltimore that are welcoming pay and not be able to get our full count. But I will simply say to all Baltimoreans that we have got to show up for the census. It is critical for our future, for our education, for health care, and for our representation. And, Mr. President, I move for immediate adoption. Move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer. Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Reisinger absent. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Sneed. Councilwoman Clark.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution 20-0205R, Informational Hearing, Implementation of the Water Accountability and Equity Act, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Finance and the Department of Public Works to provide the city council with an update on the administration's progress on implementing the Water Accountability and Equity Act. Sponsors, President Scott, Middleton, Pink, excuse me, Burnett, Bullock, Henry, Cohen, Pinkett, Dorsey, Clark, McCray.
Please add Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes as co-sponsors. Thank you to all my colleagues. April 13th is an important implementation date for the Water Accountability and Equity Act. We want to ensure that this critical piece of legislation, this law is being implemented properly in a timely manner and accordance with the law, so that the residents can get the help that they need with water bills. This hearing will also provide the council with information about the implementation of the act, so that we can provide that with the citizens of Baltimore. And I think that we all can agree that water bills continue to be an issue in the city of Baltimore. Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Consent calendar. Oh, no. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request wave rule now in order to introduce a resolution to the floor.
Without objection, the rules will be... Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer. Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Reisinger absent. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Sneed. Councilwoman Clark.
The ayes have it. You may proceed, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I'd like to suspend the rules for this resolution.
You're good. You can introduce the resolution.
Okay. This is a charter amendment, and it's actually just saying with the new...
Councilman, point of order. I will, you, make sure that, is it out on the council member's desk? It's a resolution, not a charter amendment.
Okay. It's just for the purpose of establishing a commission of citizens to review the charter amendments that are before the city council, which is 13. And the idea was just have a more robust conversation with the community and also being able that the council, 13 representative, one from each council district, actually to the Law Department, the Finance Department, the Equity and Civil Rights, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and the University of Baltimore Law School, and the Curry School of Law. So it's a more robust conversation, so the community and the citizen will know exactly what this 13 amendment is going to be saying. Thank you.
Please add Council President Scott as a co-sponsor. Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Councilwoman Sneed. Councilman Costello. Council Vice President Middleton as co-sponsors. Thank you. This has been assigned to the Equity and Structure Committee. Consent calendar. You will find consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules to extend floor privileges to my special guest.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Your guest may take the floor.
Mr. Kirby Fowler, Downtown Partnership. Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you may have heard, just like that. Perfect. Me neither. Just so everyone's aware, Kirby Fowler is stepping down at the end of the month. He's going to be leaving Downtown Partnership to head up the Maryland Zoo. It is certainly our loss at Downtown Partnership, having been a board member for the past five and a half years, and certainly Maryland Zoo's gain. I thought it was important to recognize Kirby's 15 years of service to the Downtown Partnership. Many of you may not know, the team that Kirby's built at the Downtown Partnership is really an incredible team. Out of 11 senior staff members, four of those members are black, two are Asian, eight of them are women, three of them are in their 30s. Kirby's really built a team that truly reflects what our city looks like and who our city is. When you get down to the operational level, almost 95% of the operations team identify with being a minority. Kirby took the lead when we were debating minimum wage in the city council to ensure that everyone on the operations team at Downtown Partnership was getting paid $15 an hour. Since 2011, over 70 major developments have come to fruition in the Central Business District. For a city that's 30th in the country in terms of overall population, we are punching far outside of our weight class with the 11th-most residents in a downtown area and the 14th-most employees in the entire nation. But some of the things that Kirby and his team have been able to do, many of which you all are familiar with, co-creating the Bromo Arts District, which I know Councilman Dorsey is very familiar with, creating grant programs for small businesses, artists, and tech entrepreneurs, funding free bus travel for public school students to downtown amenities, establishing a very robust homeless services outreach team that works very closely with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, as well as BPD's hot team, helping to launch the Charm City Circulator, overseeing planning for the new Lexington Market and managed approval process for renovations at Cross Street Market, leading the transformation of the East Pratt Street Corridor. And probably the thing that Kirby's proudest of is revitalizing green space throughout the Central Business District, taking the lead on attracting $24 million of investment in Center Plaza, Preston Gardens, Hopkins Plaza, and McKeldin Plaza. So Kirby, I've got a city council resolution, a city council Baltimore resolution... A city council of Baltimore resolution be hereby known to all that the city council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Kirby Fowler in recognition of fifteen years leading Downtown Partnership's efforts to improve quality of life and grow Baltimore's Central Business District. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented this ninth day of March, two thousand and twenty. Signed, Council President Scott, Councilman Costello, and all members.
Mr. President, if I may? Thank you very much, Mr. President, and members of the council. It's been an honor to have worked with you over these years, all of you, to improve Baltimore. It's our great city. I also want to thank, of course, our great councilman, Eric Costello. He cares deeply not about just his district, but the entire city. You've been exceptional leader of the city, and I will miss working with you. But I accept this also on behalf of the hundreds of employees of the Downtown Partnership who come to work every single day trying to make a difference. And it's why I stayed so long, it's just the wonderful people I work with. So, thank you very much, please come visit me at the zoo. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello again.
Thank you, Mr. President. On to other business, I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Before we go any further, Mr. Fowler, I'd like to thank you for all your work. It's been a pleasure to work with you, mainly for public safety issues over the years. But I look forward to continuing to work with you at the Baltimore Zoo. I have to finish my tour, so I'll see you in a few months. Committee reports. We will now move to bills on second reader. Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-three-eight-zero, Charter Amendment, Veto's.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three charter amendments coming out of committee today. All were voted on, on March fifth. All were heard here in council chambers for their formal public hearing. And then we took input at two additional work sessions out in the community and allowed input at a second hearing here in the council chambers. They are, well, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna read them individually, so I'll just do them individually. This first one, Charter Amendment, Veto's. I move with a favorable report.
You have amendments to this one, Council.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. We have a amendment from the floor. There we go. I move the amendment. Should be on council member's desk. This is the amendment offered by the Finance Department to restore the line item veto capability in the charter amendment which lowers the threshold needed for the council to override a veto from three-fourths to two-thirds.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I read the bill, but I can't read words in the air. What, what is, what is the amendment? I know what the bill says. What's the amendment?
The, the charter amendment itself, the bill did two things. It lowered the threshold required for a veto override.
Twelve to ten.
From three-fourths to two-thirds. And it also removed the language in the charter that allows the mayor to have a line item veto for the budget. The Finance Department made some compelling arguments for why that could be logistically problematic to take that out. And so, we are offering that amendment here on the floor to remove that language and allow the line item veto to be maintained.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I, I move the amendment.
All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendment is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Please note, Councilman Costello is a no. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-four-one, Charter Amendment, Charter Review Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I've been interrupting people all day, I'll try to get better at that. This bill also came out of committee on March fifth. It has no amendments. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Please note, Councilman Costello is a no, the motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-six-seven, Charter Amendment, Veto's, Timing of Override.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill also came out of committee on March fifth. There was one amendment that was approved by the committee, I moved the committee's amendments.
All those in favor...
I'm sorry, the committee's amendment was a clarification recommended by the Law Department with the approval of the sponsor, Councilman Dorsey, to make it clear that the point of the charter amendment was to ensure that the council always got an opportunity to override a mayoral veto. The clarification was to make it explicit that that ability did not go across terms. So, if an outgoing council passed something and an outgoing mayor vetoed it, the next council could not be the council to overturn that veto. And so, that's what the amendment, that's what the amendment does. Yes, in the next term.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Please note, Councilman Costello is a nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader, Health Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero-three-one-one, Nicotine Replacement Therapy Products, Sale and Distribution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on February twenty-fifth, and there are amendments to the bill on the council member's desk. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye. All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved, Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero-one-seven-nine R, Informational Hearing, BGE Plan Power Outages.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee heard this bill, or this resolution, on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. There are no amendments, I move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor of approving this resolution say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, this resolution is adopted. Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-six-two, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Three-Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District, Variance, twenty-one-twelve St. Paul Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Committee held a hearing on the bill on March fourth. The findings of facts are on the my colleague's desk. I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All those in the polls say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-seven-three, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Two-Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District, Variances, seventeen fifty-eight Park Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Committee held a hearing on the bill on February the twenty-sixth. The findings of facts are on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of facts are adopted, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-eight-zero, Zoning, Use Standards, Neighborhood, Commercial Establishments.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Committee held a hearing on the bill, on the bill, March, on March fourth. There are amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
All those in favor, is findings of fact too?
No, not on this one.
All those in favor of approving this amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-five-one, Biennial Comprehensive Crime Reduction Plan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee heard this bill on November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and had a voting session on March fifth, two thousand and twenty. There are amendments on your desk, and I'd like to move the amendments favorable.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved, Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. I think the youth councilmen from the ninth district has problem with land use bills, third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-three-six-eight, Police Ortenances, eleven forty-one Poplar Grove Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This, Chair, I mean, please note, Councilwoman Sto, Councilwoman Clark, sorry, as a no, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero-four-eight-six, Private Security Camera System Rebate and Voucher Program Establishment. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Dorsey as a no, this bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution nineteen dash zero-one-five-nine R, Investigative Hearing, Building Backups of Untreated Sewage on Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, at ten a.m. The Land Use will also hold a hearing on Bill twenty dash zero-four-nine-four, Zoning Conditional Use Banquet Hall, located at five-four-zero-one Bel Air Road on Wednesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty, at one-ten p.m. The Land Use Committee will also hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero-four-seven-five, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Two-Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District, located at eight-zero-six Reservoir Street on Wednesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty. The Land Use Committee will also hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero-four-four-nine, Zoning Use Regulations, Neighborhood Commercial Establishments, on Wednesday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, at one p.m.
All right, Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be holding a legislative oversight hearing on May twelfth at three-thirty. The legislative oversight hearing is regarding the condition of the homeless shelters in Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, March the twenty-fifth at ten a.m. to review the following nominations. The Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, Michael King and Yolande Paxton. Also, Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, March the eighteenth at ten a.m. for the Mayor's Office, Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, Curry Davis, Adam Levine. Also, for the Planning Commission, Eric Stevenson. And also, for the Board of Ethics, Arnold H. Sampson. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March thirty-first at five-oh-one p.m. Legislative Oversight nineteen dash zero-zero-six-zero, Budget Oversight Hearing for the Baltimore City Police Department. And the Judiciary Committee will hold the hearing on Tuesday, March thirty-first at ten a.m. Council Bill twenty dash zero-five-zero-five, Building Fire and Related Codes, two thousand and twenty addition, at the request of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number two-zero-dash-zero-five-zero-three, Thursday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, here in council chambers at ten a.m. And it's the University of Maryland at Baltimore approving application for designation as a RISE Zone, granting enhanced local property tax credit. And I also move to suspend Rule ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number two-zero-dash-zero-two-zero-five-R, Thursday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, here in council chambers at ten a.m. It's an informational hearing implementing the Water Accountability and Equity Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer. Oh, sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to clarify that I abstained on the first motion because I've recused myself from that bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, at five p.m. on monthly crime stats for the police department.
Thank you, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. The Equity and Structure Committee will meet here in council chambers on Thursday, March nineteenth, at twelve-fifteen p.m. to hear City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-four-two, Equity Assessment and Fiscal Note Requirement.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Committee, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
The Labor Committee will hear, have committee hearing on Bill number twenty dash zero-four-eight-eight on Thursday, March nineteenth, on two thousand and twenty. It's the Construction Projects PLA Agreement for the Purpose of Requiring Project Labor Agreements for Certain Construction Projects in Baltimore City.
Please note that the council vice president will be abstaining in that matter. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I forgot to suspend the rules for one of my announcements. I move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March thirty-first at ten a.m. Council Bill twenty dash zero-five-zero-five, Building Fire and Related Codes, two thousand and twenty addition. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton. No, oh, nope. Regular announcements. I will start and recognize and welcome President Tiffany Parkman in the Chi Phi Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha, AKA Sorority Incorporated, serving East Baltimore, who are hosting their annual Legislative Night here at City Hall. Welcome, ladies, as always, thank you for being here. And I also would like to ask the council vice president to honor a moment of silence for the now fifty-three victims of homicide in Baltimore City in two thousand and twenty, and all those that we have lost to overdose as well. And then would also like to ask Councilman Burnett if he would give us a quick recap of the coronavirus hearing for the public from, from last week, a hearing that I called for, but the councilman was here for the duration, so, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we held our first hearing on the coronavirus. We were actually going to be working to have regular hearings as additional updates occur. But we had a very lengthy presentation from the Health Department who gave advice on how both citizens can protect themselves and a lot of detailed information on the city's plans to prevent a outbreak from occurring and also plans that if one does occur, what we should expect from the Health Department, from Office of Emergency Management. We also heard from Baltimore City Schools that provided all of their contingency plans related to if an incident was to occur at an individual school, as well as more information on the district-wide plan for the possibility of a coronavirus pandemic. You know, obviously, we, at every presentation, the same thing reoccurred, which is follow the CDC recommendation and guidelines. I would also encourage all of my colleagues to sign up for updates on the Health Department's website. It's health.baltimorecity.gov. There are regular postings and information on how you can protect yourself, protect your family, and guidance on, you know, large events and that kind of thing. But it was a very informative hearing, we're going to continue to do these hearings. We're gonna continue to do these hearings, uh, as things evolve. Uh, but hopefully, we are gonna be in a good place moving forward. But, uh, as always, uh, you've probably heard a thousand times, we're advising people to, to fist bump. Uh, you wash your hands thoroughly. Uh, do not maintain close contact, don't go on long trips or cruises, um, and just, again, continue to sign, sign up for updates, reach out to the Health Department. They're doing a very good job, in, in my opinion, at, uh, at the beginning stages of planning, but obviously, as the situation evolves, uh, more information will, will come out. Um, and we are likely to do another hearing, uh, very soon, and I'll be, be sure to announce that. Yep.
Thank you. So if anyone missed it, wash your hands consistently. If you're sick, stay at home and listen out for the best information. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on Saturday, March twenty-first, at Function Co. Working Community, I will host a third district conversation from eleven AM to twelve thirty PM with Commissioner Harrison. Uh, I'll be personally facilitating that question with, uh, a conversation with questions that I receive in advance or on the day of in writing. Uh, really looking forward to that and appreciate, uh, Commissioner Harrison agreeing to do that. Um, uh, I don't know what else is going on in the arts right now in Baltimore City, but if nothing else, you can count on City Hall itself. There is a new show in the gallery, uh, downstairs that I invite everybody to come to. Uh, the official, um, opening reception is this Thursday at six PM. It is a dual show, um, from Amani Lewis, uh, the show entitled First Corin- First Corinthians twelve fourteen in the South Gallery. And in the North Gallery, my wife, Erin Fostel, uh, with a show called A Room of Her Own for those out there, uh, just looking for evidence of corruption and such. I had nothing to do with getting her this show. She's a fantastic artist. I hope you all come and enjoy, and enjoy the art here in City Hall.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna take a moment to remind everyone that the next Equity and Structure Committee here, I'm sorry, Committee Work Session will be out in the community on March sixth at six thirty PM at Fort Washington Elementary School. Twenty-seven ten East Hoffman. Thank you. We will be, we will be.
Fort Worthington Elementary?
Isn't that what I said? Fort Worthington at twenty-seven ten East Hoffman.
And what's the date? You said March the sixth.
March sixth at six thirty PM.
Sixteenth today.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm re- okay. I'm gonna get a better set of glasses, I promise, and wear them. Uh, March sixteenth at six thirty PM at Fort Worthington.
Thank you.
And, um, we will be, just to make it explicit, we will be accepting testimony on all of the charter amendments that are still in committee at these community work sessions.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, before we announce the council meeting, I'd just like to recognize that March is Women's History Month, and we must continue to, uh, celebrate this month with, um, the history of women. And, uh, uh, this is also the time where there, uh, women are celebrating the right to vote. Um, we continually celebrate, um, and fight for equality and pay raises and, and so on. So, um, please join us and, um, continually to celebrate and work hard for women that are definitely a part of Baltimore, Maryland, and the US. And also, I wanna add a moment of silence for the victims of the coronavirus. So on that note, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, March twenty-four, twenty twenty at five PM. And may we have a moment of silence for the families of the victims of the coronavirus and also the fifty-three homicides to date. And also for the families of these, um, continued opioid epidemic.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the seventy-ninth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.